Good evening, everyone. We're here -- I'm opening the public hearing for PFAS that we're having this evening.
Pledge of Allegiance.
First thing I'd like to do is have everybody stand so we can do the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate it. This hearing is about PFAS-6, which are chemicals which have been found in our water. And we're going to have two presentations. The first will be by Mary Jude Pigslay for the Mass DEP Regional Director. She's going to give us a PFAS overview. And after that, the second presentation will be Danielle Tashara of Time and Bond is going to go over the PFAS treatment options that the Water and Sewer Department has in front of it. I ask everyone if they could hold their questions till after each of the presentations so that they can go smoothly and then we can present the questions after each of the presentations. So, Mary Jude Pigslay, or?
Is it? Yeah. Okay. Just take time back to people. My name is Mary Jude Pigslay. I'm the Regional Director of the Mass DEP Office in Worcester. We have 77 citizen towns from north to south, from south to the up to the Brookfields. We have the distinction of having about 40 percent of the public water systems that have PFAS out on contamination in this region. So, we've been dealing with PFAS a lot and we've been dealing with the town of Webster on PFAS for a while. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here again. I was here in November to talk about PFAS after a public notice went out in October. Senator Batman's office was here then and I think maybe some other people have heard or seen the presentation before. So, a little bit is an overview and then there's some new information for at the end. So, what I'm going to do is give you an overview of what are PFAS and why does the DEP regulate them in drinking water? Why we're specifically talking about PFAS here in Webster? And what the future holds for PFAS regulation, both in the Massachusetts on the national level. And then Time and Bond is going to talk about the proposal for PFAS treatment and the options. And just to be clear, this treatment is something that the DEP is requiring. And Time and Bond has developed options, but it's not a question of should we do it, it's how should we do it because it is required. And then, I think we're both going to mention a little bit about public funding that's available for the PFAS project. So, what are PFAS? You've probably read about them or you've heard about them last time I was here. Perinpolycloralco substances is PFAS.
Excuse me? Could you speak into the mic? They're having -- we're recording this and?
Okay. So, perinpolycloralco substances, it's a family of literally thousands of compounds. Every time I read about it, it's, you know, 3,000, 4,000, 9,000. They're man-made chemicals. You've probably heard of them as forever chemicals. They're very persistent in the environment. They don't break down. Very hard to get rid of them. You need to incinerate them at very high temperatures, like 1,000 degrees Celsius, to get rid of them, to break them down. And there are very few places that can do that. The reason they're so difficult to destroy is also the reason that they were so widely used in industry. They're heat and water resistant, stain resistant. So, they've been used in a large number of consumer products, which I'll mention. But some of them are very toxic. And I have another slide about the particular health risks associated with PFAS in the drinking water. But because they don't break down, they're in the body for a long time, there are developmental risks for developing fetuses, infants, hormone disruption, and for long-term exposure, possible cancers. And the more toxic chemicals are the ones that have those longer chains of carbon and fluorine molecules. Those kind of chains are among the most difficult in all of chemistry to break apart. So, the ones that have longer chains are the ones that are more persistent, more toxic, and are the ones, or some of the ones, that Mass DEP is regulating. So, as I mentioned, there are a huge amount of consumer products. Teflon is probably the most widely known, but I'm not supposed to use commercial names, but, you know, things like Stain Guard kind of things, things that are on your waterproof jacket that may or may not be called Gore-Tex. Wax, floor wax, car wax, ski wax, smudge-proof mascara, the super slippery dental floss, inside of microwave popcorn bags, I mean, you name it, there's probably some sort of carbon fluorine-type chemical in it. One of the things that is very pervasive is aqueous film-forming foam used in fires. It's a specific military-spec foam that is good for fighting petroleum fires. It forms a film, like the name says, on top of the oil, jet fuel, whatever, and it goes with it. And because it was going with it in fighting many fires, it is in the environment from firefighting activities. So, most people, not just in the United States, but in the whole world, have been exposed to some levels of PFAS. And I've seen studies where if you take basically 99 percent of the people in the world have some level of PFAS in their blood. When we talk about risk of any kind of contamination, drinking water, soil, air, the things that we talk about are the sensitivity of the person who's exposed, the concentration of the chemical that you're exposed to, and the frequency at which you're exposed. So, for PFAS, the particular populations of concern are pregnant women, nursing mothers, infants, and immune-compromised people who drink the water or cook with the water, cook with, to make food that absorbs a lot of water, like pasta or rice, in a residential setting. So, if you look at those things and you extract from those, so things that pose relatively less use is somebody not in a sensitive group, not in a residential use, like at an office building, a restaurant, or water that you use for washing vegetables, washing your clothes, washing your dishes, not ingesting. If you're concerned about potential exposure to PFAS, you can drink and cook with bottled water. Or there are home treatment systems available. We have information on our website about various home treatment systems, which really not so much an issue here in Webster. But sometimes we have towns that don't have municipal water, everyone's on private wells, and we have private well contamination and people have an interest in home treatment systems. So, we have that information on our website. I'm going to say a lot, we have that information on our website because we have a ton of information on our website about PFAS. And I highly recommend it to you. I'll give you a link at the end. So, here's why we regulate PFAS. Here are the concerns. Obviously, infants and children at risk is a reason that the state would want to regulate these. It is detected in breast milk. It's toxic at extremely low levels, which we'll talk about also. They don't break down and they stay in the body for many years. So, for all those reasons, Mass DEP made the decision to regulate these compounds that were not regulated before. So, you may hear PFAS referred to as an emerging contaminant or a previously unregulated contaminant because we did not have a standard for PFAS, any of them, not just the six we regulate now, until October of 2020. This is just more on the health effects. And at the end, you probably can't see it because of the blue background, but there is a link, and I'm not sure whether the commission will be posting the presentation, but if so, there's a link to more information on health effects from the ATSDR, which is the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, which is part of the CDC. And they have a ton of information specifically about the kind of health effects that I've been talking about. So, that was a very little bit, very fast, about what the PFAS are and why we regulate them. So, now, I want to talk about how we regulate them. And this part gets a little bit dense and I'll try to walk people through it. And as I said, some of this you may have heard before or you've read in the public notice that came out in October last year. So, in October of 2020, we adopted a drinking water standard. We refer to it as a maximum contaminant level, MCL. I'm going to try to talk without acronyms. So, drinking water standard is the same as the MCL. The MCL is 20 parts per trillion for a total of six of the PFAS compounds combined. We didn't put the 15-syllable names of all six of them. Those are on our website. I can get them to you if you want to. But we chose, our Officer of Risk Assessment picked the six that seemed we had the most information about the human health effects and that we should regulate here in Massachusetts. The 20 parts per trillion is protective of those most sensitive people that I talked about before, the pregnant women, nursing mothers, and infants who have a short-term exposure. So, not a lifetime cancer risk situation, an exposure period of just months to one of these sensitive individuals can result in health effects. So, in setting the standard so low to protect those sensitive people by extension of protecting everybody else because we're protecting the most vulnerable people, and it does take into account that you're getting PFAS exposure from other things as well as your drinking water. We regulate under the federal, the United States Safe Drinking Water Act, which is a federal statute. There is no federal statute for, federal standard for PFAS. We implement the federal regulations, but we can also make our own regulations. And EPA doesn't have a PFAS standard yet, which we'll talk about. But EPA did tell certain-sized public water systems, over 10,000 customers back in 2015, I believe, as part of a routine they have called the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, they pick unregulated contaminants and ask public water suppliers all across the country to look for them. Are we seeing them? Where are we seeing them? Back in that rule, PFAS compounds were on the list of things to look for. And lo and behold, people were finding them everywhere, all across the country. And as I mentioned, with the firefighting foam, in particular around military bases. So, which is, you know, the people who are protecting our country are living on bases that are exposed and have contaminated water. So, it is really a matter of national importance and focus at this point. So, I'll talk a little bit about the EPA stuff in a bit. The rule is a complicated rule. It's one of the most complicated drinking water rules DEP has. It requires quarterly sampling. And it was phased in because it was a new rule. The largest systems started last January. The medium-sized systems, which included Webster, started in April last year. Smaller systems in October. And then the very, very last group is things that are really small, like a Dunkin' Donuts that has its own water supply, very small users. They have to finish their sampling by September of this year. And every three years, the rule requires us to perform a review of the developing science. And the science is developing so quickly from all over the world that we've already started that three-year review a little early to see if we should change that standard. So, Webster started sampling in April last year. I said it's a quarterly, it's a quarterly average. So, it's, the samples are measured at the point where the water enters the distribution system. So, not in the well, not if the water is coming out of the ground, but after it goes through whatever treatment a system has, and it's going out in the pipes to your house is where the compliance point is. If any PFAS was detected, we require a confirmation sample because there are so many things. You know, you could have put sunscreen on your face and then touched the bottle and taken the sample and PFAS could get in it. So, we always require it after that first sample, if any detection was in there, to take a confirmation sample, and then we average the two just to make sure it was really there. If that average was over 10, which is half of the standard, the system's not in violation, but instead of doing quarterly sampling, has to do monthly sampling. And then, to determine that quarterly average, we take the three months, January, February, March, do the math. The average is whether you're in compliance. If you're under 10, you get to take the sample just once a quarter. So, I'm not going to go into a huge amount of detail on that. But the key is if the average, the monthly average over a quarter is higher than 20 parts per trillion, the standard, that's a violation. And what you have to do if you're in violation of public water system is you have to provide public notice to the customers, which we've seen, and you have to develop a corrective action plan for the short term and a corrective action plan for the long term. So, this is just a reminder of why we're here talking about this, what the violation was. This is what happened in the fall of 2021. And if you can see, the blue highlighting is the finished water, the treated water. It's good to get the information from the wells, especially like here where you have multiple wells at Memorial Beach, so that if you did have PFAS in the treated water, you would be able to look and see which well might have been the culprit. But we don't regulate the water at the well. We regulate the water that's coming into the system. So, with the samples in July and August, 20.4 and 24.2, the average is 22. We do some rounding, which, again, there's so many details to this rule. So, that was a violation and the town responded immediately by taking the Bigelow Well out of service. So, that well was taken out, recently has been put back on. But the, since that time, obviously, the short-term measure was to immediately take the well out of service. If you want to see all of the PFAS sampling results, or actually, all the results for the town of Webster's water system, we have that online. We call it the Data Portal. There's a link, I put it at the end. You can go in, I'll show you, and you can look at the lead and the copper and the iron and the manganese and the PFAS and anything that's something that we regulate in Webster. You can see those results for yourself online. That's all public information. So, if you have a violation, we issue a notice of noncompliance. And they all look the same. I put part of it up there for you so you can see. I mean, it's a notice of noncompliance. It says you violated the PFAS standard. You must deliver public notice to all your customers. It tells you what the public notice needs to say. I'll show you that in a second. And as I said, you need a short-term and a long-term corrective action to return to compliance. Short-term was taking the well out of service, and we're going to talk to, talk about tonight, is what's that long-term solution to bringing the system back into compliance so that you can use the Bigelow Well without worrying about having adverse health effects. That public notice that you received back in October was very dense, very hard to read in small print, and that's not anyone in Webster's fault, that's Mass DEP's fault. It's a form. Everybody, all the water suppliers have to use the same form for notice. So, we're sure that everybody's getting the same information, but I know it's really hard to read. It does have all the important information in it. It explains about the three-quarters, the averaging, and all of that. It talks about the health effects that I mentioned. It talks about steps you could take, what the town was doing, the fact that the well was taken offline, who the point of contact was, and then links to our website, and I think the town's website as well, for additional information. So, it was hard to read, I'm sure, but there was a lot of important information on that. So, I'm going to talk about what's happened since then. What happened? So, DEP has been doing a ton. I mean, I feel sometimes like PFAS is the only thing I work on. So, we developed the drinking water standard. We also developed cleanup standards for contaminated sites. We've done a huge amount of technical assistance and outreach to our public water suppliers, both our municipal partners and private condominiums and things. We funded a firefighting foam take-back program for fire departments that may have had PFAS containing foams, and DEP collected them up and paid to have them incinerated. And in the budget that just passed, you can thank your legislators for another $250,000 for DEP to conduct additional firefighting take-back. So, that's a good thing. When we have a municipal system like Webster, like Dudley, where there's contamination, we try to help the community figure out where is it coming from. In Dudley, we have a couple ideas that we're pursuing. In Webster's, there was no real smoking gun. The former Princeton Print Works location, which is the grocery store now, is possible because printing is an industry with inks and dyes and glues can have PFAS. But at this point in time, I don't really have anything encouraging to talk about in terms of having found a source, but we're not giving up. We'll probably look to get some information from the former property owners of that property. And then, we paid for every public water system in the whole state, 1,300 of them, to do their first round of PFAS sampling because nobody had to sample for this before. This was brand-new. Nobody had budgeted for this. Each sample is $350. When you take the sample, you also take a blank to make sure of that cross-contamination thing. So, we paid for that. And we also sampled, I think, about 1,600 private wells in towns that have more than, it was 85 towns, they have more than 60 percent of their people on private wells, just to see if we could see, is it prevalent in certain kind of places? Is background non-detect? We're just trying to gather information about private wells. There is non-detect. So, that's good news. That's what DEP is doing. There's only 16 states that regulate PFAS right now. And I said that EPA does not. So, this is just a slide, it's probably a little bit out of date, of which states, New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts, Vermont, Connecticut, all have some variety, some sample individual compounds, others are like us and sample an aggregate of some of them. EPA has what's called a health advisory. And it's not a regulation and it's not enforceable, but it is an advisory that this could present a health issue. Theirs was adopted in 2016 when communities first started finding PFAS in the water. And it's 70 parts per trillion for two of the most common and most toxic, the first two on that table, PFAS and PFOA. So, the standard that EPA has is 70 parts per trillion. It's not enforceable. But if you live in a state that's not a state with primacy, like Massachusetts, where we implement the federal law, or it doesn't have its own regulation for PFAS, that would basically be the default value, would be 70 parts per trillion. So, hold that thought, that EPA doesn't regulate this. Because in October this past year, EPA came out with this enormous PFAS strategic roadmap. And it talks about the three-pronged approach where they're investing in research to try to understand the toxicity of all these different things. What are the human health effects? What are the ecological effects? And then, enacting regulations to restrict the use, the manufacturer, different things that will keep PFAS out of the environment. And then, adding PFAS to the list of things that are cleaned up at Superfund sites, which is a very big deal, especially on some of the military bases where different rules apply to the military. But if EPA says it's a contaminant in a Superfund site, it has to be cleaned up. So, this was this broad plan that came out in October, and everybody was talking about this roadmap. And then, in June, kind of out of the blue, they issued a new health advisory, actually four health advisories. And again, they're not regulations, they're unenforceable. The EPA's rules are non-regulatory, non-enforceable is what they call them. Just for those two, the PFOA and the PFAS, and two other ones that were not regulated before called GenX and PFBS, that we either have never seen in Massachusetts or we've seen at super-low levels, so it's not an issue here. But the PFOA and the PFAS, these health advisories, I didn't put the numbers up. It went from 70 parts per trillion for the two of them combined to something like 17,000 times less. It's .000, four zeros? Four parts per trillion. It's too small to measure. The best that the labs are doing now in terms of measuring for PFAS at the sites that we're working on is two parts per trillion. So, two parts per trillion is where the instrumentation can reliably report out a quantifiable amount of something. The number's two. EPA is saying that the number is .00004, which the instrumentation can't even see. So, it's not a regulation. Sometime in the fall, EPA is going to propose a national drinking water standard for PFOA and PFAS. Once there is a final drinking water standard, Massachusetts rule goes away and we are implementing the federal requirements, which is what we do. We would be implementing whatever this new rule is. When EPA adopts a drinking water standard, they do have to take into things like cost and feasibility. We don't think it's going to be a number you can't measure because that's not feasible. But clearly, EPA is on a track with its advisory councils, its scientists, to propose something much lower than Massachusetts and the other states have now. And this is, this is just, it's hugely significant. Like I said, 16 states are regulating this now. Once this rule comes out, all 50 states are going to be regulating it, which obviously has an impact on who gets the money. So, right now, the proposal will come out in the fall. I am sure there will be, all across the country, a gazillion comments filed, and they think that they will have the final enforceable standard sometime in the spring next year, 2023. So, talking about money, which is important and I think why people came tonight. So, there's something called the State Revolving Fund. And there are actually two of them, but we'll talk about the drinking water one. EPA has money, Congress gives EPA money to give to the states. And EPA makes that money available for states to give out low-interest loans to help municipal water systems comply with the drinking water standards. So, EPA gives each state a certain amount of money, and then the state itself has to provide a 20 percent match. So, it covers construction-type things, new drinking water plants, new sources, new storage facilities, replacing contaminated sources. But as you can imagine, it's a very competitive process. There's, you know, 351 cities and towns, 1,600 public water systems in the Commonwealth, and everybody has a project to do. I mean, deferred maintenance is just a fact of life. And it's a competitive process that results in Mass DEP actually scoring projects. And the higher your score, the more likely you are to get an award of a loan. So, when we look at the scoring for the projects every year, and this is an annual process, we look at how severe is the problem and is the proposed solution an appropriate solution for that problem? It's a rolling process. Every year, it starts over again. The deadline is Friday at noon to get the proposals in for this next round that's coming up. And there are all kinds of strict deadlines. I think maybe Time and Bond might be talking about how the schedule works. But when we started seeing PFAS back in 2020, we changed our scoring criteria to make the PFAS projects go up to the top. So, if you had PFAS, you trumped lead and copper, you trumped iron and manganese. The PFAS got higher scores. And there's now, we've changed the SRF, that PFAS projects are eligible for 0 percent interest. So, even though the loans have traditionally been below-market rate loans, the interest on PFAS projects can be as low as zero. And with some information EPA announced recently about the bipartisan infrastructure law, which is sending a lot of money to the states, there is specifically PFAS money, and there is PFAS money in there that is not only zero interest, they are grants, you know, federal free money. So, that may be coming next year as well. But also, there'll be 50 states competing for money next year. And right now, there are very few competing for all that money. So, like I said, if you want more information, you don't, the internet is just a black hole. Like, don't Google PFAS. Something popped up on my screen today that some Swedish study found that rainwater all over the entire world is unsafe. You know, you can't touch the rain because it's full of PFAS. Just Google Mass DEP PFAS. That's our landing page. That's what it looks like. You click on that, and it takes you, I mean, it has just a ton of stuff on it about if you're a customer of a public water system, if you have a private well, if you're interested in the science behind the 20 parts per trillion, what did our risk assessment people look at in coming up with the number? What about private well treatment, things like that? It's all there. If you are using bottled water, just because you like bottled water, there's a link to the Department of Public Health, which has a list of bottled water companies that have voluntarily tested their water for PFAS. And you can check your, you know, Poland Spring or whatever you buy against that list at DPH. You can get that on our website also. If you're interested in the particular information about your water supply, about Webster, the EEA Data Portal, I mean, there's a live link up there if the slides get posted. But if you just do EEA Data Portal, it will come up. And it takes you, it shows you all the different data sets that we have. If you were looking up a 21-e-side at an old gas station, if you were looking for an air permit, you can find all of those. But there in the middle there is where you click on drinking water. And when you get to drinking water, you can put in the name of the system. If you start typing in Webster, there are other things that have Webster in the name. So, I put the actual public water supply number, the ID number up there, which is the fewest. EEA Data Portal, there's a live link up there if the slides get posted, but if you just do EEA Data Portal, it will come up, and it takes you, it shows you all the different data sets that we have. If you were looking up a 21 East side at an old gas station, if you were looking for an air permit, you can find all of those, but there in the middle there is where you click on drinking water. And when you get to drinking water, you can put in the name of the system. If you start typing in Webster, there are other things that have Webster in the name. So I put the actual public water supply number, the ID number up there, which is the fewest characters you would have to type to get there. But you could also, I think you're called Town of Webster, so if you started typing Town of, and then you got to Webster, and you click search, you can see everything. If you don't want to see everything, if you would want to see iron and manganese, which you're going to hear about, you could type, there are dropdown menus for all the chemicals, and you can look up everything that's in the system in terms of water quality in Webster and across the state. So I don't know, did you want to have questions now or after Taiyan Bond?
No. I know that's a lot of information for everybody to digest right now, but I would say now would be a good time for the question if that's the end of your presentation.
That's it, yeah.
Again, I think the problem is, for some of us, is what questions to ask, because again, there's quite a bit of information here, and a lot of it is still pending. There's a lot of, there'll be a lot of changes over the next few years, mostly from the EPA as to what the standards will be.
Right, and the narrow thing that isn't changing is the town violated the standard. We issued a notice of noncompliance, the town needs to have a long-term solution. The change that's going to happen is other towns who aren't in this predicament already are going to be suspended next year. And so right now, you're in line to get, I think we are, sorry, process was $363 million last year, which sounds like a lot of money, but you took a $33 million project and it comes down. So this is the time to get in, because all of these other towns who have not been in noncompliance, but they're hovering in 15, 17, which is fine, just within our health standards. If that standard changes in the spring, that's the federal standard, that's what we'll be able to, and I just don't know that that's going to be 20%.
I'd just like to add to everybody in the audience that we did load both presentations on the Water Department website today. If you go to the menu on the left-hand side where it says PFAS information, you'll be able to get both presentations.
Two questions that are sort of related. You said that this only applies, this only really a problem in your own home, but why do you drink in your company? So what are restaurants doing to get the PFAS out of their water, and what are bodily companies doing to get PFAS out of their water?
I'm not getting any of the audio. So questions, two from the audience?
So the question was, other than just drinking the water in the home, the community, people drinking from the public water supply at home, what are things like restaurants doing? For Webster, all of the water that comes from the public system is what's regulated. So the water at restaurants, the water at daycares, the water in your home, that's all the same water, and that's what's regulated as a public water system. In towns, I didn't look, Webster may have some small public water systems of their own, some restaurants, office buildings, but the same thing, 20 parts per trillion, that's the number. The only thing that the 20 parts per trillion does not apply to are things like Dunkin' Donuts where, again, not to get into the nuts and bolts of it, but a public water system is a system that serves 25 or more people 60 or more days a year. In a community system, or like a restaurant that has a lot of employees or an office building, it's 25 of the same people, and that's the 20 parts per trillion. You don't have to live there to have the 20 parts per trillion apply. If you're Dunkin' Donuts, you have more than 25 people a day for 60 days a year, but they're not the same 25 people. So we've done separate math on that, and for one of those kind of sources that provides its own water, not city water, town water, the standard is more like 56. But in Webster, I'm not sure what the coverage is for the water system, but it's pretty broad, percent-wise.
Yeah, it's high 90% range.
So there are very few people or businesses that would be providing their own water, but if they're serving more than 25 people, I regulate them, and it's the same as what I just told you, 20 parts per trillion. Does that answer the question? I'm not sure.
You started by saying that we could, part of the way to mitigate this is to buy bottled water. So who is regulating Poland Spring, and what is Poland Spring doing to get the PFAS out of their water?
The Department of Public Health regulates, they don't technically regulate them, they don't set standards, but if you want to be in that business in Massachusetts, you have to provide information to the Department of Public Health that says you meet all of the Massachusetts drinking water standards, lead, everything, which includes PFAS. So they have a list on their website of the companies that have voluntarily produced information, so it's not something that DPH says you have to do these things. And I'll tell you, the list is a little bit hard to read, it's very, very long, because it takes each brand, each company, and they all have a ton of different brand names, you know, like Aquafina is Pepsi, and Nestle has a whole bunch of different brands. So it's by the big company, and then you have to look for the brand name. So if you buy Poland Springs, I can tell you Poland Springs is on the list. But if there's something that you're buying that's a store brand, like Whole Foods or CVS, Gold Emblem and all that, you have to specifically look for that brand. But in that's, I mean, there are people for whom the safe number is zero. So you know, there are towns where the presentation that I give is good news, you're under 10, you know, all you have to do is quarterly monitoring, and then you can apply for a waiver, and you don't even have to monitor anymore. And some people say, I don't care if it's anything over 2, because 2 is the lowest you can see. And those people choose to drink bottled water, cook with bottled water, and that's a choice. Some people just like bottled water anyway, they like the flavor of bottled water more than they like the flavor of their own water. But that's just a personal choice.
So I have a choice at home to use bottled water or the town water, but our schools don't. So our staff and our school's children are drinking town water all the time. Is it safe for them to be using the water? Not just for cooking, but they consume a lot of water.
Right, and just to be clear, the Bigelow Well was taken offline immediately, and it was only brought back online back in May?
Mid-May, yes.
And it's off?
It's back offline as of today.
As of today. So there was an emergency, which I'm sure you saw and heard about, and the Bigelow Well needed to be back online. But from October until whatever date in May that was, nobody was drinking the PFAS water. It was off. There was an emergency, the town contacted us, had taken some recent information, samples from the Bigelow Well, and the number was, I think, 15.5. So that well came back online. I know the town had put on its website a notification to people, in case you are a person who would prefer to have zero risk and to knowing that the Bigelow Well was back online, would prefer to drink bottled water, the town gave people that information to make those decisions. The Bigelow Well's back offline. If you could live without the Bigelow Well, we wouldn't be here tonight, because you're not drinking water that's violating the standard. You need, my understanding, is the town needs the Bigelow Well, you need the volume. So that's why we're talking about treatment, because you can't bring that well back online unless it's treated, because the water has too much PFAS in it, and that's just a fact. But right now, the schools, this building, every place, I mean, the PFAS water is not in the distribution system.
Unfortunately, I live in close proximity to the Bigelow Well. And I'm just curious as to, are we being so close more prevalent of getting a higher concentration of this or of this PFAS?
Again, you're not getting anything from the Bigelow Well right now. The Bigelow Well is going to stay offline until the treatment comes back on, barring another emergency where you would need to have water for firefighting, and you know, it would just, you would have to bring it back on. But it's, the water sample is taken at the point that it enters the distribution system, which is before your house. So that's, if it meets the standard at that point, which is before your house, it's going to meet the standard at your house. So that's, before it gets to you is where the sample is.
I'd just like to add that Bigelow Well was producing approximately 25% of our daily production, and when it is in operation, yes, it's pushing out the distribution, but it only runs for, say, three hours a day on a schedule, maybe a little longer on some days, but when it shuts off, water will come from the Memorial Beach system and push back the other direction, so it would in fact be a mixture of the two systems.
It seems like there's some people who are always going to be concerned at any level. What is the expense for those people to treat it at their own home?
Well, again, the goal is to have treated water coming into your house, and what we require for treatment is as close to zero as possible. I mean, we've issued permits for the first towns that we were dealing with back in 2019, Hudson Air, Littleton, their permits say you need to treat to non-detect. And some towns and other regions have been writing permits that say you need to treat below 20. I think statewide, the permits are going to say you need to treat to non-detect, because we don't know what this EPA number's going to be. So the water is going to be non-detect by the time it gets to you.
My question is, can they treat it themselves at home?
Well, my question back to you is, why would you treat water that's non-detect?
I guess it seems like some people might be concerned. I'm not in a high-risk group, I don't think so, I wouldn't be worried about it, but it seems like some people are always going to be worried, and they're not going to want to wait five years for a treatment plant to come online.
Right, and that's, you know, I understand that, but what this treatment system will do, we treat the water to non-detect, and the Bigelow Well will not be in full-time use on whatever schedule it runs until the treatment system is tested, and then it's, there is a very regular scheme of testing, and it's very conservative. So if the town goes with carbon, is carbon, so these giant, giant Brita filters 20 feet high, full of granular activated carbon, we put a sampling port, there's two, depending on the size of the system, but two of these big carbon units, and there's a sampling port in the middle. So you take a sample before it goes in, you take a sample in between the two carbon units, and then you take a sample at the end, and you can see if there's any breakthrough of PFAS in between vessel number one and vessel number two, before it even gets to the other side. So the sampling is very regimented and controlled under a DEP permit. I'll answer your question, because I know you're asking about treatment systems, but again, you're treating treated water at that point, and they're expensive. So there are a couple of different things you can buy. None of them are certified to get you to 20 parts per trillion for the six that we regulate. You can buy them with what's NSF, is like the United Underwriters Lab kind of stamp of approval, it's called NSF, and they will certify things to meet the health advisory, the current health advisory from EPA, well, now not the current. They're certified for 70 parts per trillion for the two, the PFO and the PFAS. If it's taking out some, it's probably taking out more than that, but there's nothing that you can buy that guarantees less than 20. People still buy them. You can buy carbon, and you have to swap out the vessels, and when the carbon is exhausted, it has to be replaced, you have to get rid of it. Some of the people, some of the companies will take your carbon back, and other ones, you need to find out what to do with this very hazardous product. Reverse osmosis will take out the PFAS, but DEP does not recommend reverse osmosis systems for people's homes, because you need a discharge permit. RO systems use up a lot of water, and we call reject water, it's about three gallons of reject water for every gallon that's treated, and that water has to go somewhere, and people want to put it in a hole in the ground, but you're not allowed to put PFAS water in the ground. So you would have to come get a permit from us, and we would say you can't have a permit to put PFAS in the ground, so there's no point in buying an RO system. If somebody comes knocking on your door, which is happening in some of these towns with private wells, we will sell you a treatment system, and don't buy an RO system, because it's a waste of money. A carbon system costs about $3,500, depending on the size of your home, depending on what if you have a water softener, if you have, probably not here, but some places with private wells have disinfection. So the ballpark is 3,500, but it could be more.
Any additional questions? Okay.
I can say.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next presentation will be by Taiyan Bond, our engineering and consulting firm that the Water and Sewer Department uses, and they are going to present the treatment options we have to remove PFAS from our water.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle Texara. I'm a project manager with Taiyan Bond, and tonight I'll be discussing the proposed water projects for the Town of Webster. Also wanted to introduce Tom Cutler, who's the Webster Water Superintendent, and Jeff Faulkner in the audience, who's the senior project manager for these projects. So tonight I'll be speaking about two separate contracts. The first one involves the two water treatment plants for PFAS removal, and the second contract involves water meter upgrades. So we'll dive right into the first contract, and Mary Jude already presented on what PFAS is, so I'm not going to get too into the details on that, because we've already heard that. So I will specifically talk about Webster's current concentrations of PFAS and what we can do to treat them. All right, so this again is just Mass DEP sampling requirements, which Webster has been following. So if you, based on the sampling, the PFAS 6 has been detected at all three of Webster's sources. The second table on this slide shows the most recent sampling results. So the first line on there, Memorial Beach Pump Station Raw Water Number One, that sample was collected in May of 2022 at 11.8 parts per trillion. That is a raw water sample, so it does go through the treatment plant prior to entering the distribution system. So if you look at the second two lines, the Memorial Beach finished water concentration, which was sampled in July of 2022, was at 6.39 parts per trillion, which is below the maximum contaminant level of that 20 parts per trillion. The Bigelow Well, on the other hand, the finished water at Bigelow came in at 26.1 parts per trillion for July of 2022. That well was taken offline today. And as was mentioned previously, that well was only put back online to meet water demands for the system, because one of the wells at the Memorial Beach was down for maintenance issues. That well has since been restored, so now Bigelow is offline. This is just more of a discussion of EPA health advisories, which are a lot lower than the previous health advisory, so we anticipate that national drinking water regulations that EPA will set by the end of January, by the end of 2022, will be lower than what they previous were. So this figure Tom actually created, and it's a great representation of all samples that have been collected for PFAS since sampling started back in April of 2021. So the red dotted lines, horizontal lines, are representative of the bottom line at 10 parts per trillion is the action level for Mass DEP, which are, if you're above that, you require additional sampling. The second horizontal dash line at 20 parts per trillion is the maximum contaminant level. So if you look at the top light blue line, that's representative of the finished water at Bigelow Pump Station 3. And as you can see from that, there are three points over the course of sampling at which the maximum contaminant level was at or exceeding the 20 parts per trillion. The other finished water well that's used for compliance The other finished water well that's used for compliance monitoring is that black line kind of at the bottom of the screen. And that's for the Memorial Beach wells. And those are below the maximum contaminant level. There's only one point in time that it was actually above the action level. However, all those other lines in between are representative of raw water at the individual well sites. And as you can see, some of those are approaching that maximum contaminant level of the 20 parts per trillion. And therefore, we need some treatment. So this slide is just an overview of the actual sources for Webster. So the Memorial Beach wells, there are six wells that go into two pump stations and are treated at the newly constructed Memorial Beach Water Treatment Plant, which was put into service in 2019 specifically for iron and manganese removal. Since 2019, the Memorial Beach Water Treatment Plant has been the primary source for the town of Webster. The other water source is the Bigelow Road well, which is, which goes through pump station number three. And that one, since 2019, has been used in emergency situations only. And most recently, there was an exceedance of the MCL in July of 2022. So, sorry, that's supposed to be July of 2022. So that well has since been taken offline. But Bigelow Pump Station Well 3 is needed to meet water system demands, especially if one of the wells at Memorial does go down and in peak summer demand. So in addition to the PFAS, there is iron and manganese in the groundwater in Webster. The treatment plant at Memorial does treat for iron and manganese, but there are detections of iron and manganese at Bigelow. And currently, there is not a removal system in place at the Bigelow well. So right now, iron and manganese are considered secondary water quality parameters. So they affect taste and odor. And manganese is currently above the secondary max contaminant level for Massachusetts. So there would need to be, for the proposed system at the Bigelow site, there would need to be some iron and manganese pretreatment prior to the PFAS treatment. So this slide is just showing what Webster has done to date to deal with the PFAS situation. So they have been in compliance with all mass DEP required sampling. Monthly testing began in August of 2021 due to action level exceedances. That notice of non-compliance from mass DEP went out in October of 2021 due to the MCL exceedance at the Bigelow Pump Station Number Three well, which was taken offline in September of 2021. Due to the Bigelow well being taken offline, we've been also working on an optimization evaluation for the Memorial Beach Water Treatment Plant to try to get more water from that pump station to compensate for when Bigelow well is down. Part of that evaluation included a recommendation for some well cleaning. So by cleaning the wells, you can get more volume out of the wells, and that is currently ongoing. The other step that Webster has taken is completed bench scale testing for GAC media at the different sources to make sure that the GAC media is effective at removal of PFAS. And that bench scale testing has helped us to determine the size and number of vessels that would be needed at each of those treatment plants. So this is the water treatment plan. We have, we are proposing two separate treatment plants. One to be installed at the existing Memorial Beach site adjacent to the existing water treatment plant that's used to treat iron and manganese removal. And then another one at the Bigelow Road Pump Station site. And that treatment plan would also include iron and manganese pretreatment. In terms of the treatment methods, I think we've mentioned before, granulated activated carbon is the most popularly used at this point for treatment of PFAS. The PFAS absorbs to the granular activated carbon and eventually that carbon will be spent, so it does need to be replaced. So this slide is just showing a conceptual site plan for what we are proposing at the Bigelow site. So we would propose in that rectangle, new treatment system to include iron and manganese pretreatment, which at this point, we're looking at around four filters, we think, followed by PFAS treatment, which would be another four filters prior to entering the distribution system. The conceptual plan for Memorial. So after treatment at the existing treatment plant for iron and manganese, the water would be directed to the new treatment plant building located to the southwest of the existing building. And that is where we would have the four, we're thinking 40,000-pound GAC vessels in that building. So the Bigelow Road Water Treatment Plant will reduce the PFAS levels to below the MCL. And I know Mary Jude had mentioned that we're trying to get them down to non-detect. So I just put that in there now before bench scale testing is complete and we go through all the design parameters. It will also reduce iron and manganese levels at that plant, and that would have to occur before the PFAS treatment. And this, having water treatment at this facility will provide the needed redundancy in the summer months. And if any of the wells were ever to go down at Memorial, also provides drinking water of high quality to the residents. And the Memorial Beach Water Treatment Plant would have, would also reduce the PFAS levels to appropriate standards. And for treatment technologies, I already talked a little bit about GAC filtration. That's what we're proposing to use for Webster. And that has been used and is currently being installed in several towns throughout Massachusetts. I listed a handful there, which we have projects in construction or in design phase, all of which are using GAC for treatment. For iron and manganese treatment, there are a couple of options, the green sand filtration or biological filtration. The Memorial Beach Treatment Plant uses green sand filtration, but we're going to do some pilot testing to evaluate which one is a better fit for the Bigelow wells. So for next steps, the funding application for SRF is due Friday by noon. So we will be submitting an application for funding for the treatment plants. After that, we're going to complete our pilot study, the PFAS pilot study, submit that to DEP. In the fall of 2022, there'll be a town meeting to appropriate funding for the design phase of the treatment plants. And then following that, we'll get into the design with piloting for iron and manganese at the Bigelow station, and then final design of the water treatment plants. So I just talked about the water treatment plant project. And I'm going to discuss the actual budgetary costs after I talk about contract number two, which is the other project that we are proposing, which is the water meter upgrade project. So currently, there is greater than a quarter of, or 26% of unaccounted water, even after leak detection, that is unaccounted for. So after it's produced at the plant, we don't know what happens to that 26% even after we've accounted for leaks. So we do need a new water meter replacement program so that we can account for that unregistered water. By replacing these meters and getting those installed, we'll be able to account for more of the water, which therefore will help out with revenue, especially from those larger meters that water could be unaccounted for at. So the water meter replacement program will include replacement of all the town's meters. There's a probably, there's approximately 5,000 meters and radios. As a part of the project, we're proposing installation of an advanced meter infrastructure system. And that will allow for real-time data tracking of water usage. So we'll be able to detect meter malfunctions or irregularities more on the spot and detect those leaks. The customers will also be able to see their water usage through an online portal, but that will also be helpful, too. If you think your water bill is high, maybe you have a leak and you can see that firsthand. So as far as the funding approach was discussed a little bit in the previous presentation. So right now is the time to go after this funding because there is a lot of money set aside for PFAS projects. This 20-year construction loan with 0% interest rate. There's also principal forgiveness. And we anticipate right now that a minimum of 19.8% would be grant money. And we do anticipate that number to be greater, but we will not know exact numbers until the beginning of 2023. So we are currently evaluating the water rates at this point in time to also look at that. And here is a summary of the preliminary budget costs. So for the two water treatment plants, the total cost, we're anticipating around $33 million. For the water meter system upgrades, we're anticipating around $4 million. So most of that will be covered, SRF eligible for the funding. The design phase is currently not covered, is not eligible for SRF funding. However, there may be opportunities in the future to include the design phase, which is the $2 million within the funding. And these numbers are all preliminary budgetary numbers. And in order to narrow down these numbers, we'll need to do additional design work to actually get these numbers tighter. And this is just the anticipated project schedule through the SRF program. So we will submit this Friday for the PEF application. And we will find out in the beginning of 2023 if we made the funding list or we're on the IUP list. Then, let's see, the, we have a loan application submittal in October of 2023 if we do make the IUP list. And then we anticipate final design and going out to bid in March of 2024 with a notice to proceed in July of 2024. And we anticipate that construction of the water treatment plant will be a couple of years. So by March of 2026, it will be substantially complete. The water meter project will not take as long, probably just a year for that one. And thanks for listening. If you have any questions.
I think you said that the treatment plant that you want to build will ensure that we would stay at 20 parts per trillion. So what would we need to do to that treatment plant if the requirements become much lower than that?
Yeah, so we're going to design it based on piloting and our, based on piloting, we will get it down to zero. We'll do, we'll be very conservative to get it to that point. I just didn't want to have it in writing right now that we can meet that standard. But that will be all evaluated during the design phase and we will be conservative, as conservative as we can be with what we have in terms of analytical detection limits at this point.
So if it doesn't get down to that level, do you add another treatment? Is there a different type of treatment? What happens?
So right now, GAC is kind of the tried and true method. There is ion exchange, but the best we have right now is this GAC removal, so.
I had stepped out of the room. Maybe you answered this. I missed part of the discussion. Is this only treating the Bigelow Road well?
No. So this is two separate plants, one for Memorial and one for Bigelow.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting here, but I did watch the last meeting that was held. So you're going to go for the granulated carbon filter. What happens with what is left over? I had heard that there's toxic waste after that that needs to be removed. There's none of the facilities here in Massachusetts. Does the town get to pick which location and the cost so that when those are remediated in a landfill, does the town get to pick where it goes and who it goes to?
Yeah, so that will, the town will get to pick where the media is sent to. So right now, it's incineration basically is the only way of getting rid of those compounds. So typically, the media replacement will involve calling that media off-site, replacing with new media, and it will have to go to an approved disposal facility that can handle that. Disposal costs, we're anticipating right now that it would only be a change out of once per year, but that's preliminary data based on our bench scale testing. But I think it's around $2.40 per pound of media for disposal. And we have four filters that are 40,000 pounds. So it will be, you know, a high maintenance cost.
I did a little bit of research on groundwater, and I had read that during droughts, the groundwater level in wells and toxicity can be higher. Is that true still?
Yeah, so it's really hard to tell. PFAS has so many fluctuations and so many different variants cause it to be high or low, so I can't really say if that is 100% true, but.
I just want to let all of you know that I'm from Ashland, Massachusetts, where there is a superfund site. I grew up in, literally on top of a plume, where underneath my home, six feet below my home, was toxic vapors. It was a chemical that turned to a vapor. And my home had the first vapor mitigation systems in the country. And they didn't work. So I have 21 years of exposure. So I am six times more likely to get cancer than the average person, including groundwater and drinking water. So for me, this is a very important topic. I had read that there might be a two-mile pipeline from Bigelow to Memorial. Is that still in play? Not anymore? Okay. And can you tell me as well, when you have... Is the cost, let me say this, is the cost still between four to eight million long-term from the last meeting? Or doing new buildings and activation?
Yeah, so the budgetary cost for construction of these two plants is around $33 million.
33 million?
Yes.
Is there still a forgiveness from the state?
Yes.
Is it 18. something?
So we're thinking right now that the forgiveness is around 19%
Okay.
Based on economics for Webster, but we won't know specifics until early of 2023.
Okay. And I just want to ask another question. And I just want to ask another question. I'm sorry for taking the microphone for everybody. In my town, we're going on 30 years of cleanup. It's a superfund. It's much different, I'm sure, than here. But what I wanted to ask is, mine is considered a plume where I'm from. The plume needed to be remediated and cleaned. In Ashland, we're on fractured bedrock. The groundwater moves. We've had recent problems with earthquakes here locally. Are we on fractured bedrock here in Webster?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay. And is there a plan to do some initial drilling around the Bigelow area to find out where the PFAS is sitting? Is it just in that area that you feel it might be? Or have other towns tested positive for this? Or are we just the isolated ones where we're considered the source?
So I think there...
There are 150 public water systems in the state that exceed the PFAS standard right now.
Yep.
And it's not like, I'm not sure if you're talking about Nianza...
Yes, exactly.
So it's not those kind of chemicals that sit and off gas, or these chemicals like to be in water. They're water soluble. They go where the water goes.
Right.
So it's not that same kind of a situation. We're looking to identify a place where it is.
Okay, so there's no plume?
Plume is a, it's a hard word to get your head around. It's coming from somewhere, it's going to somewhere, but what does that look like? And your question about the bedrock is a good question because water goes where it wants to go.
Right.
So if you're driving down the pike and you see the, you know, the rocks and you can see the veins, that water's going to go, you know, so you don't know without doing extensive studies. And there are, in those 150 public water systems, there are systems that had PFAS in the hundreds of parts per drilling.
Yes, there are.
So not in the low 20s
Okay.
...like Webster. So there are other locations that, as I said in the beginning, in Hudson, which had about 800 and something in one of its wells, we were able to look next door and see that there was an industrial facility that uses PFAS and its products. That was easy, and that company ended up negotiating a settlement with the town of Hudson to pay for one of its treatment plants. So sometimes it's obvious, as I said, we've looked, you know, we know what to look for, and the best we could come up with is the Cranston Print Works, former Cranston Print Works property, which is, I think, about 3/4 of a mile from the Bigelow well. So it's not, like I said, it's not a smoking gun. We're going to continue to look, but really what that gets you is just somebody that you have to sue to make them investigate the site, see if there's contaminated soil. It could be that whatever was happening there decades ago has left some contamination, and you have to figure out how to get that, if you can get that. But we just don't know yet.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask as well is, if you are downtown, if you pass where that location used to be, heading out of town, there is a gas station that's closed, that they have been doing some type of remediation on the right-hand side after the old Shaw's Plaza. It's closed, but the land seems to be down gradient, which would be down by where the water would flow that direction. It's obvious to anyone that drives by it, it's dilapidated. There's old buses, trees growing through vehicles and things like that. For people that have owned a building a long time ago, would the town go after those people as well and their estates if it turns out that it's them as well?
Well, I think what I can say is that the state did test several locations along Mine Brook from the shopping plaza to the Bigelow area.
Okay.
And they didn't draw anything conclusive as to isolate the problem. We're still scratching our head. And I think of note, with the drought that we've had this summer, if you recall the graph with the blue line for Bigelow?
Yes.
Just for the past four months that we've had Bigelow back online, it's gone from 15-point-something to almost 20, and then down to 17, and then up to 26. Why? Nobody has those answers.
Okay.
That's not uncommon.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the project costs. I believe those are the costs just to stand up the treatment plan. What are the total cost of ownership that we need to be aware of relative to maintaining this going forward?
Yeah, so we're in the process of doing a full lifecycle analysis to get those numbers. These are just preliminary budget numbers. So, you know, the maintenance fees will include replacement of the GAC media at both plants, probably on a yearly basis. I can't really get too far into detail on that without going further through the design process, so.
Okay, so the response is that as you go through the design process, then we'll have a better sense of what that total cost is?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm curious about what type of ongoing testing and monitoring is being done about the water bodies that are right near the Bigelow well. There's Mill Brook that runs from the previous Cranston site, and also the French River that does have some industry located right on the river edge.
I believe Earl just answered that question. The state did do some testing on the Brook, and I know that they're going to be doing some additional testing on the French River.
But what I'm asking is about frequency and long-term.
For the testing? That would have to be answered by Mass DEP. I don't know how frequently they'll be doing it, but I do know that they did do it a couple months back, and they saw similar results to what we're seeing in our well.
There are no requirements for surface water testing. It's groundwater and soil that we regulate now. I think that will be coming, but any surface water information that we get is typically when we have a site and we're trying to figure out where the water is going. So in different communities, we do have some surface water information. USGS has done a study of surface water. There's been a big study about surface water quality down the Cape. So there are different studies going on, but there's nothing specific right now to Webster that would involve surface water sampling.
Okay. My concern is long-term in the past history, the impacts of the industry that was along that, both bodies of water for over a century. You know, I live in that area as well and have had neighbors tell me of three-legged frogs and all kinds of crazy things. And Mill Brook used to be known as Die Brook. So there has to be some extensive... It came from Cranston Mill, and people would go fishing or whatever, depending on what color the water was. So that's the reality of what we face as a nation with previous regulations. I just want to know what we're doing proactively about that.
Like I said, there are no surface water quality standards for PFAS in particular. I can tell you the dermal contact is not an issue. It's ingestion. You drink or you eat food that contains the water, and that's the risk. That's the exposure that I was talking about. And there are sensitive subpopulations and then the rest of the population. But showering, for example, in water that we know to have PFAS is not an unacceptable risk. So swimming, especially in water that has been moving, we would not expect there to be an issue with that. If we found PFAS in the water, we would want to know where it's coming from. It's not, it's not a dermal thing.
So for something like that, is there going to be bottled water available for students and people at risk through the town? Or, and how do they know when? Because it seems as though the testing is every three months or so. Is that correct? And in the meantime, are people going to be ingesting it and not realizing?
So the testing is done monthly, and the contaminated site, or Bigelow, has been removed from service as of today. It is in standby mode. It will only be used for emergency purposes. You know, our plan is to, everything possible, not to use it. But, you know, if we get into a situation where we have a well failure down Memorial Beach, we'll be forced. But we're doing everything in our power not to turn it on while we go through this design process.
Okay. I'm really impressed with how you handled it. I saw everything that you had done, and I wanted to thank you because that's a huge deal, and thank you for being proactive.
Thank you.
As a victim of this, I can tell you that no one else needs to get this. I wanted to ask as well, in the last video that I had seen, there's a gentleman that I recognize from that was in the audience, and I recognize you as well, ma'am, or a couple of you. Joe McKenna and Senator Fatman's offices were very interested in this at the last meeting, and there was discussion of money being earmarked for this program. I was wondering if anything has been confirmed that has been given to us as of yet? And at a state level, what kind of support from this point forward, since we're confirmed to have an issue? What can we expect monetarily if we're hearing that $33 million at this point, before anything is even done, is happening? Has there been anything confirmed in the amount of money that will be coming to us as of yet? And I did hear that an application through the last meeting is supposed to be going in August right now.
The reason, the reason we're applying, we need to apply by August 12th, that's to get the SRF funding, State Revolving Fund, which is 0% interest.
Yep.
And 19.8% loan forgiveness.
Yep.
So on a $33, with $37 million cost of two projects, 19.8% is a huge chunk, and the 0% interest will also save over the life of the bond quite a bit of money.
There had been some referral to some stimulus money that might be coming to us. Do you know if that's true?
I can say that Representative McKenna had let us know that in the budget that was just approved shortly, a while ago, that there is $100,000. It's been earmarked for the planning phase to go toward that, but that's the only... And there's a representative from Senator Fatman's office here, too, but I don't know of anything else.
Jeff Faulkner from Tine Bond. Just a little bit on the funding. We have to put in the funding application now for the construction costs. That's why you see some budgetary numbers. But we're only just starting the designs, very preliminarily, preliminary. The Fall Town Meeting is what is going to ask the town to fund the design. But in terms of the stimulus dollars and the SRF program, the PFAS projects are set up to have really the best funding mechanisms through that program. The traditional SRF program is a 2% loan, so PFAS projects are getting 0% loans. Because of Webster's economic status and the way the state ranks the funding applications, that's the 19.8% that we've been discussing tonight. On top of that is the opportunity for some additional monies relative to the BIL infrastructure law that passed six, eight months ago. Those numbers are not defined yet in terms of what each project will get, but there's the opportunity to get more than the 19.8% principal forgiveness, particularly because it's a PFAS project as well.
So 19.8% as a loan, 0% interest, and $100,000 we can count on as a town without having to pay back to this date?
I don't know about the $100,000, but...
Or possible?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've heard it's in the budget, so.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
No other questions? Well, if that's the case, thank you for Danielle...
We did want to just touch base, Jeff, if you want to talk about the lead service line inventory and replacement.
So the topic of lead service line inventory and replacement, not related to the PFAS project at all, but the EPA has recently revised the lead and copper rule, which all water systems need to comply with. And that is leading to some new work by all water systems that need to be completed by October of 2024. This includes inventorying water service materials, both on what we would call the town side, from the water main to the property line, as well as from the property line to the house, the private side. The records are various over different years. Webster Water System, I believe, goes back to the 1880s. So you can imagine the records are not necessarily all, you know, intact. They may not be having the right information on it. You know, in the olden days, you might not have listed the pipe material. So there's a significant effort on the part of towns to inventory and understand the water service materials as part of the revised rule and develop a plan, should there be any lead pipes determined, to replace those. So that is another big deal in the water industry right now. What the SRF program through, a specific funding program through the SRF program is offering what they're calling 100% principal forgiveness projects for lead service line It's called a loan forgiveness because that's the financial mechanics of the way the money needs to be transferred. The town needs to appropriate the money and get the project through completion, and then once the project is completed, then they get reimbursed by the program. There's $20 million available in the current state program, and it's a first-come, first-served process, so we'd like to get the town an application in on that so they have a chance at that funding. If they don't get the funding, hopefully there's more that would come from EPA. But if funding doesn't come, then the town still needs to proceed with this October 2024 deadline anyway. So we're currently talking to the Water Department, Water Commissioners, about this, and we're thinking that the program is about $150,000 to $200,000, which will include further review of the data, the records that the town has, possibly some basement inspections, even some spot checks of doing some excavations right where the water services are to get a better handle on, you know, is there a chance that there's lead in any of the service pipes? So that's a program that, it's a rolling application, but it would not be considered complete until town meeting appropriates money. So we would recommend that at Fall Town Meeting, there'd also be funding for this program so that application can be formalized, and Webster would have an opportunity at 100% principal forgiveness for this.
I'd just like to say that, from what I've drawn today from the state and hearing from the EPA and hearing from our consultants, that health and safety is the primary motive for all these actions that are being looked at. And I think it's being recognized by the federal government, and the state has taken a lead on it. I want to thank our water superintendent for being very transparent and very thorough in his assessment of Webster. I think he's gone above and beyond, and I think the commission is trying to be as transparent as we can and get the information out there. We're still three, two years plus away from any solutions that are online, and a lot can happen between now and then, but you can rest assured that the Water Department and the Commissioners will do everything they can to maintain a safe environment for everyone until we can get on top of this. And there was an article, probably put out this spring, that simply said the cost of clean water, and I think that goes without saying. So thank you. So, thank you.
Can I add one more thing on the PFAS? I think the question was raised about the media. So the filters are steel pressure vessels, 20-something feet tall, so they're kind of a permanent structure. The media would get replaced over time, and the, the vessels can accept different types of media should something be invented to further, better remove PFAS. So, you know, to, to be able to get down to lower levels as testing shows what are, what become, what is non-detect now might be detectable, you know, eventually. So, you know, just a thought that the media can be changed out over time.
Well, I would like to thank the presenters for coming in and presenting to the, presenting at the hearing. I also wanted to mention that we do have one opening for the Water Sewer Commission. It's five-member board. We only currently have four, and I can tell by the questions that almost anyone here, if they were willing to join, would be a, a great addition to the, to the commission. And we meet once a month. We have an ad hoc meeting here or there, a couple of hours. The meetings typically last in case there's any interest. We will have a regular meeting following the public hearing, but if there's no other questions, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll be followed by a regular meeting of the Water Sewer Commission if anyone would like to stay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Excuse me. There is one more que, another question?
Is there going to be some type of protective clothing or something that needs to be for our town authorities that are going to be changing this filter, the, the toxins? Or is there, I just want to make sure our people are safe, because a lot of times this doesn't happen. I know that from the water spring, the gentleman that has taken Bigelow offline, I know that you're going to be working with that filter. Are you going to be provided with clothing from someone and your staff? I don't know if, I, I've read about PFAS in the air, I've read about it in the water. I just want to make sure that for yourself and for other people on your staff.
Yeah, it's a good question. And, and we do provide protective gear for, for all of our staff members, but typically the GAC, granular activated carbon, there are companies that perform that service, that do the, the bulk of the work and, and have the majority of the gear, but typically a, a water system may, may assist, but yes, we will provide all the proper PPE. Yep.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing if there's no more questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. We appreciate it.